To refer to the censure of a member on Agenda Item 7. So if there are no more announcements from yourself, Mr Mayor.
You can have a point of order about whether things are legal. I've not been allowed to see the censure before it's being read out and therefore I'm not able to correct any errors within the censure. And this goes against my human rights.
How's the conduct call? We're not even on that agenda item yet. Item number seven, Managing Director to censure a member.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a censure in relation to councillor Keith Condarca, who clearly is going to be the source of that censure this evening. The background to the censure is that on the 16th of August 2017, the Standards Local Hearing Panel was established to hold a hearing into complaints against you, councillor Condarca, that you failed to comply with the following paragraphs of the council's Code of Conduct, which state: Paragraph 3a, you must treat others with respect; Paragraph 3b2, you must not bully any person; Paragraph 3b3, you must not intimidate or attempt to intimidate any person who is likely to be involved in the administration of any investigation or proceedings; Paragraph 5, you must not conduct yourself in a manner which could reasonably be regarded as bringing your office or authority into disrepute. The circumstances giving rise to the complaint were as follows: On the 13th of April 2016, you read post of the following comments on the Muneton Community Forum Facebook page. These are the comments: The Borough Council is institutionally dishonest. On the radio today, the council director interviewed misled people on the 20% hike in all daytime parking charges over one hour. Council directors said car park charges were increased by a small amount in the last budget, but people staying between one and two hours. The council directors are well paid and this one has done a flexible retirement deal to get pension topped, so he could work four days a week. This cost around £50k, firstly your company. Secondly, on the 5th of May 2016, you read response via email to an email from the same officer in relation to his findings of the investigation he had carried out into concerns over a report to planning committee about the felling of oak trees for the development of Wellington Road, in which you would state of: Just to be clear, I do not accept the outcome of your so-called investigation and request that no planning permission be issued until this matter is sorted. If this note is ignored, then I will take action against you and the council. The Standards Local Hearing Panel decision was that you also found that you had breached Paragraphs 3a, 3b2, 3b3, and Paragraph 5 of the Code of Conduct for councillors. The sanction is as follows: The breach was considered to be significant and the local hearing panel felt that you would be publicly censured at this full council meeting and as part of the censure, the panel agreed that your access to officers and their officers be restricted and that all contact with officers is made via Kelly Baxter or Philip Richardson. The panel also resolved, for its findings in respect of your conduct, to issue by way of a press release, for you to make a public apology on the Muneton Community Forum Facebook page, confirming that your posts were not true and without facts, that the details of your actions, its findings, and the outcome be included in the letter to be sent to the Green Party as part of the sanctions imposed at the hearing on the 11th of April 2017. The reasons for imposing the sanction was that the panel found that the statement made by you on the community, Muneton Community Forum Facebook page was false and in making it, you not only failed to have regard for the facts, but also the implications of this on the council or the officer. It was an irresponsible and malicious attack on the integrity of the officer and an attempt to undermine the officer, which on a balance amounted to bullying. The email you sent to the officer on the 5th of May 2017 threatening an action against them was a further attempt to intimidate the officer and your inference that it was election day was not justification for such a threat. Furthermore, publicly making the assertions that the Borough Council is institutionally dishonest was a clear attempt to undermine public confidence in the organisation and shows blatant disrespect to all non-resident officers who were part of it. I am therefore formally censuring you for your actions and this censure will be minuted and kept on public record indefinitely.
Okay, thank you. Go on, Mr Mayor. Which takes us on to item eight, which is public participation to hear and answer questions by any residents of the borough concerning the work of the council where the notice has been given. We've had notice of four questions and due to the amount of business we have tonight, I don't intend to take any supplementary part in the standard of the public question or members' questions tonight. Could I ask, how are members to ask these questions?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A few weeks ago, I attended the Borough Plan Examination Hearings alongside many other members of the public, who were also outraged by the way the Borough Plan consultation is being driven by this council. I was astonished to find out that the council had hired a barrister to defend the council's Borough Plan, despite the council having its own legal officers. Like many other residents, I feel angered that the council decided to waste taxpayers' money in this way. So firstly, I would like to ask the cabinet member why the council needed to hire a barrister to defend the plan when the council has their own legal team? Secondly, could I ask how much money it has cost the council and the local taxpayers to hire this barrister? Thirdly, does the cabinet member agree that the money wasted on a barrister should have instead been spent on delivering a better consultation process, which was seriously inadequate? And finally, will the cabinet member do the honorable thing and make a public apology to the people of this borough for the shambles they experienced during the Borough Plan consultation?
Thank you. Councillor Ardington, you wish to reply?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The local plan examination hearings are a very important step in the local plan process. The first stage of these was, as Mr Evans has already said, at the end of August. This stage was for the inspector to consider whether the planning meets the legal tests as set out in the planning legislation guidance. These tests have to be met before the examination can continue. It was considered that as this was a legal test, then the borough would be best represented by someone who had expertise of other similar local plan hearings. The cost of the boroughs for the work undertaken before and during the hearings has totaled £19,140, including VAT.
I do not think, I do not think this has been wasted, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Could I ask Michelle Condeco to ask her a question, please?
Thank you. On the 23rd of August, the council published its 2017 Muneton and Bedworth Air Quality Annual Status Report. This is based on the 2016 air quality measurements from diffusion tubes and the highly accurate automatic monitoring station. The legal limit for nitrous dioxide pollution is an annual mean value of 40 micrograms per square metre. However, there is a significant health impact well below this level. It is estimated that around 64 people are dying earlier than they would otherwise do so each year in the borough with our current level of pollution. The figures show that nitrous dioxide pollution at the automatic monitoring station rose from 32.4 to 36.2 micrograms per cubic metre in 2016. That is a significant 12% increase compared to 2015. The council is allowing thousands more homes to be built north of Muneton over the next decade and we have two new supermarkets opening this year nearby. It is expected that traffic around the giratory could increase by up to 50%. The council has discontinued the use of the automatic monitoring station just when traffic levels are expected to rise sharply. It has also significantly stopped regular monitoring of curbside emissions on Hinkie Road. At one location at the old Hinkie Road curbside, the concentration of nitrous dioxide is often between 60 and 70 micrograms per cubic metre over a month. Things are even worse at Corporation Street/Midland Road. The monitoring shows levels above the legal limit of nitrous dioxide still persist at some locations. Sites NB27, NB29, and NB30 have annual averages of 40 or above. My husband has obtained raw diffusion tube data for the first half of 2017 using the Freedom of Information Act. This data shows a considerable increase over the same raw data for 2016. Without our council's automatic monitoring station, it is not easy to establish how real this increase is. Why is it that the council is continuing to mothball the automatic monitoring station and refusing to monitor curbside nitrous dioxide pollution directly, given the worrying trends?
Thank you. Councillor London?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think this is along the lines of five or four of the questions in the last 12 months on the same subject. The council monitors and reports on air quality in a way that fully meets requirements of the National Air Quality Strategy. It's a fully compliant monitoring programme and keeps us under review and ensures it's fit for purpose. We do not monitor short-term curbside nitrogen dioxide concentrations because it does not exceed the air quality objective. A nationally recognised suitable alternative is now available to achieve the purpose of the automatic monitoring station, so there is no longer a need to sustain the cost of £5,000 per year to run it. There are no worrying trends of air quality in this borough. The only area of monitoring and assessment that's ever identified as being of concern is long-term nitrogen dioxide concentrations at the front of people's homes. In 2008, there were exceedances at several locations at levels up to 25% higher than the air quality objective. In 2016, there was only one exceedance at the location on Midland Road at a level of 10% above the air quality objective. In fact, this is such an improvement that DEFRA, the Government Department Overseas National Air Quality Strategy, has recommended that we revoke the air quality management area at Leicester Road Giratory System, because it's now no longer since, sorry, now so long since there's any exceedance of the air quality objective in that area. Furthermore, the analysis we have done to assess the effects on air quality of the Borough Plan found that by the end of the planned period, there will no longer be any exceedances of air quality objectives anywhere in the borough. These positive trends are identified through analysis by independent experts using the prescribed scientific methods. As an addendum to that, Mr Chairman, I am somewhat, I've said it before, I'm somewhat concerned about the challenge to some of the questions and some of the information within it. The figure of 64,000, 64 people dying earlier is based on a national figure and across the country, people dying prematurely. It's then divided by a number of areas and you end up with this one, 64. There is no direct evidence that 64 people in this borough have died as a direct result of the air quality within the borough. In fact, a lot of people have pre-existing conditions like myself, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, COPD, and around the borough, we know, we have health inequalities with lung and heart disease. So whilst this may be a contributory factor, can I stress that these people did not die as a direct result of air quality within this borough? And I think I'm keen to make that clear because these figures are going out publicly and I want to throw that myth to the wall.
It is not a myth. Do you not believe Public Health England?
Mrs Condeco, please have to respect it.
I'm just being, I don't believe a word that I'm being told. I'm sorry.
Mrs Condeco?
Well, can I suggest here that the questioner, as well as questioning this council on these things, has to get told to DEFRA. If she doesn't believe what we're saying here, she's fully entitled to go to DEFRA to find out what they say.
Not for the purpose. Could I ask Owen Reed to ask his question?
Thank you. Recently, I've been talking to local market traders and local residents in Bedworth. Now, as you can see, Bedworth Market is in complete decline under this Labour-led council. The market needs a breath of fresh air. I think the best way we can combat the decline of Bedworth Market is to bring it back into the town centre, maybe in the town centre in the summer months and in the winter months in the market space. This would also give us the opportunity to use the market space for other events, such as Christmas fairs and Easter events. It also needs some urgent care in terms of cleanliness and with its appeal. This is a third great market and will you please listen to the residents of Bedworth and please give us a say on how we can, how we can make a once-loved market love again?
Thank you.
Councillor Harvey? I've never claimed to speak for all the residents of Muneton or Bedworth or both. That's what democracy is about, is speak for a section of residents. But Bedworth Market has not been in the streets for over 50 years. Before it was in the covered area it is in now, it was on the same spot with metal rows of stores. It was only temporarily moved out while the new market was being built. So first of all, that's one fact about Bedworth Market. Secondly, Mr Mayor, unless Mr Reed is talking about some other market in Bedworth, he may be unaware that every one of the permanent units in the market is let. Indeed, we have a waiting list. How are these people supposed to go in and out of the market on a six-monthly basis as he suggests? They do not want outdoor stores. Many towns have lost their markets altogether, we have not. However, we are aware that Bedworth Market is in need of some changes and updating and intend to instigate a high-level internal clean-up, install pigeon proofing, update exterior graphics, paint the exterior, install wifi and football counters for a start. In addition, we are looking at how the existing static stores could be altered, with some pop-up stores as used in Muneton being made available. Bedworth Market still has one of the cheapest store rates in Britain. I am sure no traders would thank us if we were to take the store to outside, with all the extra costs involved in renting and dismantling stores being added to their rent, making it totally unviable. Furthermore, Mr Mayor, Bedworth Market is not affected when we're at high winds as we've had in Muneton today and the traders have certainly hauled you round for a price that is second to none, just over £8 for a single store.
Thank you. Could I ask Barry Goss to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My pleasure, my comments about the Borough Plan. I attended all three days of the inspector's hearing, which was extremely informative. It was a one-managed process. If there are any doubts, it demonstrates it's a doubt-challenging task to formulate a robust Borough Plan and deal with the many complexities that arise. It's a pity that more councils are not present to educate themselves on the key issues. First of all, I have to congratulate those council offices that are directly involved in the hearing. We're up to front of a barrage of questions, not just from the inspector, but those raised by the many legal experts who represented building developers and other clients. Also, this was against a background where key council staff had recently left and there was constant confusion over housing numbers, all three days. And this wasn't helped by the fact that the housing numbers report for 2015 and 16 had not been completed due to a shortage of planning staff. Moreover, and what is a real travesty, is that valuable input or direction from elected councillors has been largely precluded due to the council leader and his cabinet operating a complete vacuum, totally regardless of the new government. Common themes emerged over the three days: lack of transparency, opaque decisions, poor process compliance, political bias, and little or no evidence to justify key decisions. All familiar traits to those who have followed the Gresson Road-DEPO debacle and the cuts made to the Shelton Housing Service. Now, this Borough Plan, it must be the most important piece of work this council has or will ever have on its place. It will shackle the future of the borough for years to come for the benefits of our children and grandchildren. It's a wonderful opportunity to embrace change, to engage in re-energised communities, develop town centres even. Philworth Wardwell Housing and the Trappin' Unplugged opportunities to the area, it really felt exciting, while it could be. But unfortunately, this council leadership has managed to take it in the opposite direction. Ignoring residents, marginalising communities, planning for affordable dwellings, and offering nothing on the employment front, other than constant flag-waving initiatives. This course was set early on, when this council leadership critically failed to oversee the tonary issue of the in-touch publication, advised its residents of the consultation plans, thus demonstrating just how little they cared from the onset. My question is, what lessons have the council leader and his cabinet learned from the hearing and what are they going to do differently moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I would point out to Mr Goss that right from the beginning, we have a lack of council involvement and that is, we have no one from the opposition willing to take part in the Borough Plan.
Councillor Harvey, just give me one moment, please. The councillors play the midnight. This is a question and answer section, which members should be aware of. If they're not, please read it by the constitution. I'm both people coming out. I don't intend the meeting to be disrespectful to people. Councillor Harvey?
Secondly, Mr Mayor, people who know our planning policies will know that in fact we have in fact taken great account of affordable housing and insist upon our developments, including affordable housing. And I'm pleased to say that I was invited by Midland Park Housing Association to a dwelling they had just taken charge of in Weddington, in a very nice development, which was a credit to this borough, as UN to this borough, and where it was half ownership, half rent, but they in fact had 31 dwellings on the particular site they were on and they were taking more on other sites. So I'm quite pleased with our policies giving far more affordable housing. In answer regarding the Borough Plan, Mr Mayor, I think it's quite inappropriate to comment about this because the Borough Plan is now with the inspector to make his comments and his remarks and decisions and so any lessons that we may or may not comment on will necessarily have to await the inspector's thoughts.
Okay, thank you. So that takes us on to the list of questions we have for our members and we've had notice of 12 questions from members. And that's councillor Caroline Phillips to ask her a question.
George Osborne's Local Government Finance Bill was dropped in the run-up to the general election and has not been resurrected. The bill would have enabled councils to retain 100% of business rates to make up for the loss of revenue grants. The Fair Funding Review, which would ensure a fair distribution of wealth across richer and poorer areas, has also been dumped. Does the leader agree that councils are now in a state of financial limbo?
Thank you. Councillor Harvey, do you have?
Mr Mayor, the move to 100% business rate retention was intended to be implemented by 2020. The Local Government Finance Bill did not make sufficient progress before the general election and was not reintroduced in the Queen's Speech. In fact, George Osborne had also been dumped at that point. There are some elements of the scheme that could be implemented without primary legislation, but this is unclear. The government has recently published a prospectus for further pilots of 100% business rate retention pools, having refused to allow us to build one to the New West Midlands Pool. But the deadline for submission is the 27th of October. Further clarification has been sought on some aspects of the scheme from DCLG as the prospectus is unclear and the town tables for making an application are very tight. Warwickshire 151 officers met today to discuss the benefits of submitting an application to the pilot table for May 4, 2018 and there do seem to be advantages of it. It's understood that the Fair Funding Review is still progressing, but there is no further information on time scales or implications. The particular concern for us is that the council is into negative rate support grant in 2019/20, which actually means, Mr Mayor, that the residents of this borough will have to give the government money instead of the other way around, without the prospect of 100% business rate retention to ease the impact. This brings great uncertainty into our financial planning and based on current assumptions, the council requires savings of around £1.7 million over the next two years, on top of what we've already saved, to balance the budget.
Thank you. Can I ask?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could the leader expand on his representation by authority and in particular anything that might be of benefit to Muneton and Bedworth?
Councillor Harvey? Thank you, Mr Mayor. I can tell council class that our membership as a non-constituent member of the West Midlands Combined Authority has been a great success. We were the very first authority to apply for and be accepted as a non-constituent member to join the cities of the region, despite the opposition of the Conservative and Green councils in this council. I was appointed at an early stage as the representative of all the non-constituent councils on the Strategic Economic Plan Committee for the region and this was re-confirmed this year. This gives us an insight into what is being put forward at an early stage and has enabled me to speak up for Muneton and Bedworth. Most of the other councils in Warwickshire have now followed us into membership of the Combined Authority, including the county council, who vehemently opposed our membership from the start. Our membership is beginning to bear fruit, Mr Mayor. The New West Midlands Trains, which will replace London Midland in this area, will be expanding their services with a twice-hour service to Leamington and Flair Coventry, running every 20 minutes on Saturday. This will mean that people in the south of the county will more easily be able to come to our markets and town centres and job opportunities will be widened. We are campaigning at the same time to get the government, and we're supported in this by the cities, to allow transport advantages enjoyed, for instance, by Coventry residents to be expanded to Muneton and Bedworth. We have also been picked out to receive funds, possibly of several hundred thousand pounds, towards programmes helping people to get back into work in this borough and we have put forward land development schemes for funding by the West Midlands. In short, our decision to become members was the right one and our membership fee looks likely to bring in financial rewards to our borough, which far outweigh our outgoings.
Thank you. Could I ask councillor Daffham to ask her a question, please?
Could the portfolio of all the planning development town council, how many affordable housing properties have been made available over the last five months? Is he able to give any details on where these are situated within the borough?
Councillor Harvey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In the last year, 1617, there were 30 rented units completed at Camp Hill, the Longchute and Wellington Road, as well as two shared ownership units at the Fox and Crane on Wellington Road. Incidentally, I was speaking to councillor Elliot previously before the meeting started and she told me of a really good news story where a resident has actually moved into one of those properties off Wellington Road and is absolutely delighted and has no way of getting a mortgage and has moved into a rented accommodation there run by a housing On demand, more than 15 units of affordable housing is secured as part of the planning commission at 25% of the total number. In this way, the following numbers are in the pipeline. So we've got 219 rented units and 127 shared ownership properties, together with a further 103 units, where the tenure is at present unknown. We've also got, in recent years, built some council housing, which is absolutely brilliant news and, as I understand it, there is further council housing in the pipeline.
Thank you. Could I ask councillor Goldby to ask her a question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A recent news update on the George Elliot Hospital website has appeared telling everyone the following: Exciting new improvements to A&E have started to improve access to A&E and urgent care for all our local community and to enl... A&amp;E and urgent care for all our local community, and to enlarge existing facilities." George Elliot Hospital welcomed the investment earlier this year from the Department of Health to ease the pressure for winter 2017-18. The improvement creates a one-stop-shop emergency department, access through one front door that incorporates A&amp;E, out-of-hours GP services, urgent care and the minor injury service. Urgent care and out-of-hours service will be located together in the new extended A&amp;E, and the minor injuries unit will be enlarged to better support our patients. This improvement to our existing services aims to increase capacity, improve waiting areas, decrease waiting times for our patients. George Elliot, in fact, received one million pounds worth of funding, which has facilitated the expansion of services, with the overall aim being to help meet the 95% standard for admitting, transferring or discharging a patient within four hours, by ensuring patients are treated with the most appropriate setting. In other words, consolidating and reconfiguring services to provide a better outcome for the patient. A meeting at the Neetan and Bedworth Borough Council was held in Liston Hall, Neetan, Wednesday 7 December 2016. A statement was made on the STP by the portfolio holder. In reference to A&amp;E at the George Elliot, he said, I'm quoting from the minutes, just so there's no element of doubt, "It also says in the STP, A&amp;E reconfiguration. What does that mean and consolidation? What does reconfiguration and consolidation mean? It means we are likely to have what is known as an urgent and emergency care centre, not an A&amp;E. Therefore, it will not be funded on the same basis, and neither will it serve the same process. The consequences of this, we are likely to lose the intensive care unit." So it brings up a few questions as to what are the consequences for doing some of these things. Following from this, and despite the absence of any evidence, and even with the George Elliot Hospital themselves issuing a statement, issuing a letter to staff, giving categoric assurances that there are no plans to close A&amp;E, which I quoted myself in this chamber, members of this council persisting with public claims that A&amp;E was under threat of downgrade or complete closure. Will the portfolio holder and/or the leader now confirm they understand that consolidation and reconfiguration of A&amp;E services does not mean closure or downgrade of A&amp;E or a loss of ITU, and it was incorrect to assume that this would be the outcome of any change at the George Elliot A&amp;E?
Thank you. Counselor Harvey, did you hear?
Mr Mayor, this is not the question submitted by Counselor Goldie before... Did I finish, Mr Mayor? This is not the question submitted by Counselor Goldie before 12 noon yesterday, in line with the constitution.
Can I make a point of personal explanation, please? That question was rejected, and I was given special dispensation to amend and resubmit, which is what I've just read out.
Counselor Goldie, I know it's difficult for some members, but please be not going to have to shout it out across the chamber. If you wish to speak, indicate that it will be me that decides whether I allow you to speak or not. If I don't, and you're not happy, then follow the procedure and take me to task. But I didn't see any need for that, Counselor Goldie. Counselor Harvey, you'd like to carry on.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is not the question submitted by Counselor Goldie before 12 noon yesterday, in line with the constitution. Her question was centred around Labour Party activity in our borough to save services at the George Elliot. Perhaps she might acknowledge that the Labour Party activity forced her rethink if that is what has happened. I am not convinced, however, Mr Mayor, that all services at George Elliot are as safe as Counselor Goldie claims. However, has she today changed her question? With no direct copy to me, as laid down by the constitution, I am not going to follow through on this. The rule is quite clear, Mr Mayor. Send in a question before 12 noon to the managing director with copies to the leader and the member services officer. Make sure that question is fundamentally about the work of the council or other matters of importance to the borough, and not directly about people of opposing political views, many of whom are not councillors and for whom I cannot speak. Mr Mayor, the question is not before us, but the question has been seen by everybody concerned who sees the questions. That was not the question Counselor Goldie submitted before 12 p.m. yesterday, and I believe very strongly, Mr Mayor, we have rules, and everybody should abide by those rules.
Thank you. Which takes us on to question five. Could I ask Counselor Wilson to ask his question, please?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. The Conservative Neetan Town Centre voted decisively in favour of bringing forward a business improvement district for the town, something which we on the Conservative opposition have called for and wholeheartedly support. Will the leader of the council now commit to joining the Conservatives in supporting a bid for the Neetan, and make it formal council policy to actively endorse and set up a bid with businesses in the Neetan, and also commit to doing the same, should the businesses in Bedworth also wish to pursue a business improvement district? Thank you.
Counselor Harvey. Mr Mayor, this authority has offered its support to the steering group looking to develop a business improvement district within the Neetan Town Centre. The Borough Council has provided some funding jointly with the County Council to allow for feasibility study to be conducted by the Association of Town Centre Managers on behalf of the steering group. The bid steering group is in the process of applying to British Bids for a loan from the Bid Loan Fund, funded by the Department of Communities and Local Government, to assist with the development of new bids in town and city centres. This authority has provided a letter of support to the steering group as part of their application. Jonathan White, our head of town centres and marketing, who is an experienced bid manager from elsewhere, provides ongoing support to the steering group and attends their meetings. The council as well has been able to consider any requests for support should Bedworth businesses wish to also pursue a bid.
Okay, thank you. Question six. Counselor Troens, if you could ask yours.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And as someone who started a small business in the Neetan, may I thank you also for your notice about the award to the council, and commend officers for the good work they did in the local procurement policy. Thank you. My question is, in view of the criticisms made by QC's and others at the recent planning inspectors' hearings, can the leader confirm that he, the portfolio holder, and indeed the whole cabinet, still fully back favour of the plan? Thank you.
Counselor Harvey. Yes, Mr Mayor.
Takes us on to our tomorrow. Question number seven. Counselor Debutry, if you could ask your question, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good luck with the wind walk. I need a larger aeroplane. My question is for the portfolio holder for central services. The council has recently taken the decision by officers under delegated powers, hidden away from public scrutiny, to lease land at the back of Travis Perkins to park vehicles overnight, there instead of the depot. Are there any additional insurance costs for parking the vehicles overnight, not on council premises, and will this new arrangement complicate any further tendering exercise for council services, when Travis Perkins are apparently giving us a free bid? Furthermore, could the portfolio holder explain what consideration was given to the extra vehicle movements this will cause in the nearby area for the local residents? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pompres.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, in accordance with the disagreed scheme of delegations and decision-making process, which are amongst the most open and transparent in the country, officers have made a decision to take advantage of an offer from Travis Perkins to use spare land at the rear of their premises to park Borough Council housing maintenance vehicles at no cost to the Borough Council. There are no insurance issues associated with our vehicles being parked at this location. The meaning to use this area of Travis Perkins site is time limited, to the length of the covenant material supply contract, and will have no bearing whatsoever on the requirements that will be incorporated in the procurement process of supply of building materials after the covenant agreement comes to an end. Having said that, organisations attendant for Borough Council contracts are free to advise of any additional benefits they may be able to offer the Borough Council, open above what a contract specification requires as part of their submissions. Consideration of any such additional benefits would not form part of the standard tender evaluation process test. As stated, the vehicles that would be parked at the Travis Perkins site are housing maintenance vehicles, and so would be visiting the Travis Perkins site during their normal working in any case, to pick up materials. Hence, there will be no additional vehicle use. Mr Mayor, further to the implication in the question of lack of openness, I gave an answer in full council, that's here, on the 26th of April, in reply to a member question which mentioned the Travis Perkins arrangement. The question we put of the legal notice about overnight parking at Gresham Road had just appeared in the press, and the questioner wanted to know if there would be enough space at the facility should ground maintenance vehicles also need to be parked. I said in this chamber, with everyone here, partly away from public scrutiny, that additionally, we are making arrangements with our building maintenance material supplier for secure parking facilities to be made available as part of the overall service they offer. Nobody objected then, nor since, Mr Mayor. Members will not need reminding that 18 weeks is a very long time in public. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Brindley, do you want to ask your question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Given that this council couldn't even manage to distribute the In Touch magazine to coincide with the consultation on the magnitude of the Borough Plan, will the portfolio holder now accept that it is not worth the money and scrap it, or alternatively move for a much more cost-effective online version?
Thank you. Counselor Harvey.
Mr Mayor, the council's In Touch magazine is an important communication tool as a means of reaching all borough households. Whilst the magazine is available online too, the hard copy format is preferred by many residents, and we are mindful of the need to provide information in a variety of ways to reach different audiences. The vast majority of our residents, the vast majority, do not automatically connect to the council online. It's something you have to take a positive action to do, which would just appear in your house online. Scraping In Touch would lead to the overwhelming majority of our residents, many of them elderly, being left with no direct communication about council or community events in this borough. It would be totally discriminatory in its effect, and we shall not be doing this.
Okay, thank you. Takes us on to question nine. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As we build an increasing amount of houses, and regardless of the Borough Plan, the residents of Boltonton and wider areas are already finding it increasingly difficult to secure the school places they want for their children and registered families with local doctors. Can the portfolio holder for planning and development confirm what work has been done to turn the infrastructural wish list contained in the Borough Plan into a detailed action plan that would deliver more school places and doctor surgeries before filling new housing with yet more residents? Can he also confirm, if he's looked at the impact of the proposed increase of housing on the HSG One side, on the residents of Boltonton and surrounding areas, which will increase the pressure on already stretched essential services? What does he intend to do to reassure Boltonton residents that this council cares enough about them to provide adequate plans for increased infrastructure before populating new houses in the surrounding areas? If this work has been done, when and where will it be published? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. All of the development underway or with planning permission have sectioned 106 legal agreements attached to them. These include the developers making contributions towards the following infrastructure: highways improvement, education provisions, including new schools, community facilities, health facilities, including doctors, libraries, play and open space, footpaths and cycleways. Some of these monies have already been received and passed to the relevant delivery bodies. As Counselor Smith will be aware, this council does not provide all of the infrastructure needed, so there are other relevant delivery bodies that will do that. The council then has little control of when these monies are spent. All of the section 106 legal agreements are available for the public or councillors to view.
Thank you. Question ten. Counselor Neil Phillips.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, for enduring the wind walk. One of the successful policies that this council has developed amongst others is a NABSEL programme. As a time when we see cuts to the grant from government and differing on business rate retention, this programme was forward-thinking as a means to bring additional income into the council, thereby helping to protect other council services. Could the lead of the council please bring the chamber upstate on the NABSEL programme?
Counselor Harvey. Mr Mayor, NABSEL on Neetan and Bedworth Community Enterprises Limited had an income for the council of over £150,000 in 2016-17. The estimated income for this financial year is over £240,000. This income has been generated from a portfolio of 25 properties, with two further properties currently being developed as bed and breakfast accommodation and in large properties, along with four flats. NABSEL is also exploring opportunities for further business streams outside of the housing field, Mr Mayor. We are being contacted regularly by other authorities as an example of good practice, and happy to show others the way.
Thank you. Question eleven. Counselor Pompres, if you'd like to ask your question, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. During the hearing on the local plan on 31st of March 2017...
August.
August. Yeah, it's been a long day. We had the first evidence-based discussion of housing numbers in this building since work on the Borough Plan began in May 2006. Right back in November 2011, Oxford Economics produced a report on its Neetan and Bedworth forecasting model. Its baseline forecast was that the borough needed 6,240 extra homes over an 18-year period. That is 347 extra homes a year. This was based on average growth in employment. Instead, the council's 2013 plan was based on impromptu creation of 12,000 net jobs. That is 12,000 more jobs created than would be lost over the 18-year period. This required building 7,900 homes over 18 years. Over the last four years, this council and others have kept ratcheting up the housing numbers, where the population employment evidence clearly states that the numbers need to actually go down. The latest Department of Communities and Local Government forecast for growth in housing numbers was released in August 2016. It shows that DGLC expects us to have 344 more households each year on average, based upon the bid 2014 population estimates. In context, contracts, context, Coventry is around three times bigger, and is currently building around 1,000 units per year, many of which are student flats. The rate of building was expected to rise, however, it seems uncertain, with a sharp reduction in migration, attachment migration, and a slowing in growth for the two universities. Coventry does have the capacity to build more houses each year over the length of the plan. In the council spreadsheet of what could be built each year, the council now sees the council building 1,541 extra homes in the year 2021. The other plan will go... The Borough Plan will go into its inevitable next round of consultation, it will go into an inevitable next round of consultation due to the need for major modifications or may need to be started from scratch as a result of being found unsound. Will the portfolio holder allow us to have a proper independently chaired investigation into the housing numbers we really need? How bad does this farce have to get before the portfolio... how bad does this farce need to get before the portfolio holder will admit that this project needs new leadership? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. councillor Hartley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Now, Anheater and Bedworth Borough Council falls within the Coventry and Warwickshire housing market area. The Coventry-Warwickshire and Hinkley and Bosworth Joint Committee for Economic Growth and Prosperity are the decision-making body for joint working within the housing market area. The work carried out to inform the examination version of the plan was agreed by the committee. The planning inspector is an independent chair of the examination, and that is the forum for alternative considerations to be made at this time. If this council were now to commission their own investigation, it would almost certainly not meet the legal test of duty to the director.
Okay, thank you. And following the question for the members, councillor Graham?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Since the solicitor hired by the council at the recent Borough Plan hearings referred to the plan's consultation as a third-rate pass, can the portfolio holder please tell the residents of this borough why it believes a third-rate pass is good enough?
councillor Hartley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm not aware as to the context of this question, and I cannot answer the wrong points that barrister may or may not have made. However, the council carried out extensive consultation on the local plan, the details of which have been submitted to the planning inspector for his consideration. Just the same, Mr Mayor, it is now with the local, with the planning inspector, it is his plan in effect. Is that your plan?
Okay, thank you for that. Takes us on to our urgency decisions. I don't believe we've seen any decisions taken under that. Takes us on to item number eleven. It's the cabinet, the report by the leader of the council is attached.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think I can stress enough, time and time again, that this council is being battered, battered by the government, by...
personal benefits.
...by, in particular, by the communities department, of which one of our employees is a minister, where our money is yet again being reduced and reduced and reduced. I mentioned the figure the other day, at least earlier on, 1.7 million we're to find in two years. It is absolutely appalling, Mr Mayor, how we are supposed to manage. We have now got a situation in this council where, up to now, we've managed to weather the storm and keep most of our services intact, unlike many other authorities, even during the years of Margaret Thatcher going about our long history, Mr Mayor. Very, very difficult. We are now in a situation where many officers do the work of what three people used to do, where many of our manual employees are in a similar situation, they are all pulled together in this authority, everybody is pulled together, staff and employees, councillors are pulled together to make sure we provide services to residents. But a gap of over one and a half million pounds, Mr Mayor, is just impossible to bridge. And I'd be very happy to answer questions on this, but it's thanks to our hard-working officers that we've managed to get this far without having to mend trusted guts for the next two years, I'm grateful.
Okay, thank you. That takes us on to item twelve, recommendations from the cabinet for other committees. So the twelve eight... Mr Mayor, I looked around the room, I didn't see anybody indicating. When it finished, and I didn't see anybody indicating. Well, it was there for people to indicate, it was... I have to assure you, I did have a quick look around the room, and nobody indicated. So, if I didn't see you, I apologise, but we have moved on to the next item. Item number twelve, eight, it's the Audit and Standards Committee, councillor Tandy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move that the Audit and Standards Committee's Statement of Account 2016-17, that it is being recommended to this council, and I request approval. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, seconded? Seconded. Okay, thank you. Any member? councillor Condek?
Thank you. Luckily, this is something we can debate on, and there's a lot we need to debate about. I actually wanted to bring you to the last section about the finances of the council and the medium-term plan, but we have systemic issues in this council about bad decisions being made in the past, putting us into a bad position. In these accounts, there is obviously some impact of the buying the Woolworths, or the million pounds lease, and giving TJU's one and a half million pounds incentive payment to move in. In this year, what we're talking about now, the account will show about half a million pounds write-down on that investment. So effectively, we made a bad investment all the way back in 2010, and that is now having effect now, as we find we can only lease a shop out for one pound a year. Clearly, we've made loads and loads of mistakes in the past, and it is not obvious from these accounts where they are, because they're just in revaluations of buildings. But in effect, we made an absolutely stupid error back in 2010 to put 2.6 million pounds to take it over Woolworths, while we knew nothing about when a shop like Woolworths, and we had it based upon a ludicrous business plan. We had the same thing throughout all sorts of issues, the Rasheville project, etc. These accounts actually just give us top-line numbers, but therein there is issues like the climbing wall fiasco, where we took about a thousand pounds revenue from a climbing wall there, that's supposed to have been paying for itself. These accounts shouldn't actually be showing us where we're going and what we should be doing. We should be learning lessons from these accounts, and unfortunately, they're very much a dry record of what's going on at the top level. I am very concerned about the way this council makes decisions, and a long time, we don't find out in time. We should have found out about the one pound Woolworths rent a lot earlier, we should find out about the Gresham Road overspent a lot earlier, and there's things in these accounts which we won't find out about for two or three years to come. But there are serious problems with how this council manages risks and its business approach, and its forecasting, because the other issue is like the car parking charges. We forecast, made a budget, based upon we increased car parking charges, we get more income. That just doesn't happen, and these accounts, yeah, they show a problem, and we just rely too much on a whole load assumptions from people whose assumptions haven't come right. And the particular thing is NABSEL. Marcus NABSEL is doing well, but we are buying more and more properties that have a cost, and we could make a capital loss if the housing market collapses, and I think this account should show explicitly a nice set of accounts with NABSEL, so we can see the liabilities and the risks we're undertaking.
Point of order, Mr Mayor. I do apologise if I wrongly read this. We're discussing the statements of account, not the previous reports.
Thank you. Probably I should have picked up on that while I was looking at something else at the time. councillor Robson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The statement of account is unfortunately, in some respects, just a statement of what was spent or, or in some cases even lost by the council, and as such, whilst we don't support how the money was spent in vast areas by this council, it is a statement of fact as to what things were spent on. I find it interesting, Mr Mayor, that councillor Harvey, in his prelude to the previous agenda item, said about the battering this council took under Margaret Thatcher. Perhaps it has escaped his notice, he has been in power since the days of Margaret Thatcher, and has actually been leading this council three times longer than Margaret Thatcher ever led this country, and we can see the state in Anheater and Bedworth, if I may add. But looking at page seven of the statement of accounts, Mr Mayor, I think it is worth highlighting yet again that reduced car parking income, these are the figures, they've been independently audited, £240,000 less against budget. We warned and warned again, time and time again, up and down in this chamber, so apparently that appears, if you put the car parking crisis up, you will meet resistance from residents, and lo and behold, it seemed to be a mystery to the controlling party how we lose money when you put charges up, and yet this is the mentality we've had since the days of Margaret Thatcher with the party opposite. And then again, trade refusals, we were promised the trade refusals when it went out to a draw arrangement with Coventry City Council, that we would actually make savings by entering into that arrangement, yet with the financial management, again, from the days of the 1970s, that we've lost £90,000 on that again. So whilst there is a tale of woe inside these statements of account, Mr Mayor, and I hate to have to vote for it, I really do, but I can't vote for some, I have to vote for a statement of fact, it is factual, it is contained in here, but the facts seem to be, don't seem to get in the way of a good fantasy story for the controlling room, Mr Mayor.
councillor Harvey?
Mr Mayor, this is a statement of account. I think you've only to look at what the external auditors say about the way the accounts are run in this council and have been for all the period in its history, since 1974, to see that we have always received a good, unqualified statement from the auditors. But I would like to correct one, Mr Mayor. I have not been the leader of the council since Margaret Thatcher was elected, in fact, I believe councillor Haines was the leader of the council at the time. I became the leader of the council in 1986, but I was the leader of the opposition in 2008, and Marcus Jones cut the place key and closed toilets in our public life.
councillor Tandy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, like councillor Harvey, was of the view that this item on the agenda was actually about the committed decision that was made a couple of weeks ago in relation to the statements of account of the accounts. I need to remind this chamber that these accounts have been scrutinised by an external auditor, Grant Gordon, and at the last meeting with members of the opposition present, they were signed off by their representative and myself as chair of the committee, and they were very congratulatory in the letter that they sent about how these accounts have been presented. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Tandy. The recommendation has been moved and seconded. All those in favour? And against? And abstentions? Thank you. The items carried, if I can take us on then to item number five, cabinet, Annual Treasury Management Report, 2016-17. councillor Harvey?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Again, I'm very proud of the way that this council's finances have been structured by our officers and the sterling work we have done, and the people criticised have no knowledge of what goes on, and the hard work that goes on by our officers, and neither of the people which have the sort of qualifications people have who do this work, and unfortunately have to be regularly insulted in this chamber. So I move this before you, Mr Mayor, the statement here, and with thanks yet again, firstly to the finance officers, but to the officers throughout the council.
Thank you. seconded?
Nice to meet you, research on our to Stitch.
Okay, thank you. councillor Condek?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I have absolutely wonderful faith in our treasury management. Craig has, I was on the audit committee, Craig has done an exceptional job in difficult times with changing interest rates, etc. In the past, back in 2008, we lost the money in Icelandic banks. That event is now over. I have really good faith in the officers working in it, but the point is, it's not just a question of having faith. As elected members, we're here to understand what goes on, and I do try to understand what goes on. We're here to have what is going to happen explained to us, and we're here to ask questions, because we are effectively critical friends. We are supposed to be managing this council with the officers to get a secure and safe future for our residents. If you look at this report on page forty-four, it talks about a divested income fund. That is very interesting. It may be very, very good, or it may not. I think we should actually understand better. You've mentioned, councillor Harvey, we don't understand what's going on. We actually do try to understand what's going on, and I think it would benefit us all to actually have some, actually more information about what's going on with this new proposal to invest two million pounds. Ask questions and do it cautiously, because we are in an uncertain time. If you actually go over to page forty-five at the top, it talks about the changes to regulatory environment and placing a greater bonus on members to review and scrutinise treasury management. At the cabinet last week, which I unfortunately missed because I took a very rare holiday, and I was actually okay, councillor Coadle, I wasn't ill, by not being a, it is very, very important that we discuss these things. And this treasury management report flies through the cabinet in about one minute, it flies through audit committee in about one minute. If I'm not there, no one asks any questions on anything, it seems, and these are things we should ask questions, because if we ask questions and we get a good reply, it actually gives us reassurance. And if we need to be cautious, yeah, maybe it's a good investment, but maybe we should wait a year until the impact of Britex is over. Yeah, we should say that, but we should actually be asking questions, and we should, over treasury management, be very careful. Ten years ago, I went to the cabinet, I advised the cabinet, I sat in that chair and told you not to make the investments, ended up losing three million pounds in Iceland for two years.
councillor Robson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We will be voting for this on our side of the chamber. Whilst we have our political disagreements across the well of the chamber about how money is spent, I would completely and wholeheartedly agree with councillor Harvey that the integrity of the officers cannot be impugned, they are always helpful and courteous when you ask questions and want to investigate matters. This report is basically a statement of the operational boundaries and the legal practices to have spend them, and I cannot see anything political in that. The real politics about the government in February, so I'm happy to vote for this because it is basically, we are combined with the law, that is, Mr Mayor.
councillor Hartley? Sorry? Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, yeah. councillor Tandy?
Mr Mayor, just to say that I'm pleased the council has received this, because it is in fact a fact, there's excellent work done. Councilors do not interfere with decisions about investments, that would be quite wrong. When councillor Condek says that he advised us ten years ago, and then we lost three million, well, I have to point that again, but ten years ago was 2007, there wasn't three million invested in Iceland at the time, there was by 2009, but I was not the council leader at that time. But in actual fact, Mr Mayor, now it sounds as if I might have been defending Marcus Jones. He didn't get involved either. And in councils up and down this country of every political description, and I guess Brighton might have been one of them at the time, I think that was me, it's down to the professional advice that was given at the time, and it was seen nationwide that it was safe investment. But people will realise, Mr Mayor, that the collapse of financial institutions, and indeed the collapse of Iceland itself as a country, not the only one, but it is, started around that period, but councillors did not and do not interfere in such matters, Mr Mayor, they are non-political.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded, item number two, the Annual Treasury Management Report. All those in favour of that? those in favour of that. And against? And abstentions? Thank you. That's kind, if we move on to item number C, the General Fund and Housing November You Account Quarter Budget Monitoring Report. Councillor Harvey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A move for your adoption has written here in natural fact, it's item two, that's the recommendation to council, that the updated general fund and HRA capital budgets that attach
Okay, thank you. Is that seconded? Okay, thank you. Any other? Councillor Treaney?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I think for the benefit of everyone here, correct something that it's said pretty much every year when we're at this stage in the council year, looking back at the audited accounts, and the auditors do seem to do a very good job, but what they don't do is something that seems to be alluded to every year, and this year it was the leader and councillor Tandy again, seem to imply that Grant Thornton and the auditors are in some way endorsing the policies or the spending or the, or those arrangements of the accounts, they're not. They're saying that the accounts have been properly and legally prepared, they are not making an endorsement of the policy decisions and what the money has been spent on, and I think that's an important distinction to make, Mr Mayor. If I can refer you to page 63 of the report, there's a very informative chart there, which, you know, again, as in previous years, we see the Civic Hall losing us yet more money again, still no appetite to turn that business around, you know, I commend the council for hoping that Nancell can generate some money, but its track record in running businesses and doing well and whatever isn't great, and that concerns me. But we only have to look down again at commercial property rents, that's already lost over a quarter of a million in the last quarter, and we look down still further, lost over 65,000 on parking again in this last quarter, so that'll be another quarter of a million or so over the year, and we've heard about the Gresham Road, more by eight million there, the Pyrmian Wall, all these sums that add up to several million, and I hear councillor Harvey talking about, oh, you know, we've got to find a million of savings, it's so tough for us, here's a suggestion, if you weren't losing millions of pounds with all these bad decisions historically, and all these bad decisions currently, it wouldn't be so difficult in that situation. In fact, can I make a suggestion, that it's carried on losing us money for car parking charges hike, it's continuing, you lost a quarter of a million to start with, it's going to lose another quarter of a million this year, unless you put your hands up and say, you know what, we're going to think again, we're going to cut the parking charges, we're actually going to get more revenue because more people will come in, it will increase the footfall, it will do something to benefit and regenerate our town centre, it will increase the economy, and that's what we want. We want, and this, this side of the council chamber has been calling consistently for investment and regeneration in our town centre, while it seems that the leading group that have been around for a very long time don't seem to care about the decline of the town centre, you know, fell out with a co-op who were supposed to be their friends, we watched business after business go, and it's just continued decline. So we are urging the Business Improvement District that will sort that out, that will correct some of these numbers, Mr Mayor, that will improve them so that next year we're not looking at such a bleak picture. We also think there needs to be investment to regenerate the town centre, but it's quite clear, from all the catastrophes that we've heard about tonight, from the losses here, it can't be this council that manages that, it can't be the political leadership. If there is to be major investment and regeneration in the town centre, we need to get proper experts in to do it, so that next year and in future years, the figures aren't so weak. Thank you.
Councillor Robson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would wholeheartedly echo what councillor Treaney has just said, because time and time again I stand at this position and highlight the issues, particularly with car parking, the town centres, the regeneration, and time and time again, the controlling group seem to ignore all sense of reason and rhyme, indeed experts who have actually sat in that gallery and offered them free consultation advice, gratitude to this council, but yet this council, and particularly the leadership, seem to think it knows better than those who are qualified and actually in business. It's interesting that on page 17, when it refers to the general fund and capital programme, that there is still £150,000 left in the town centre regeneration pot, which we did actually welcome, we wholeheartedly supported you putting that money in to do that, after years of calling for more money to help with the regeneration of the town centres. Only £50,000 of that has been spent in 12 months, and there are many things which could help the town centres with encouraging shoppers and market traders and businesses to open up into our town centres. So it seems like the council are using the £150,000 as a big lead to say, hey, we're doing something, we've got this £150,000 there, but it's not doing anything if it's just sat there and not being spent to the benefit of the businesses, residents, shoppers and traders of this borough. Now, I'm going to reiterate what councillor Treaney said, because perhaps one time eventually the controlling group will listen, and as I said in the previous agenda writing, we lost a quarter of a million pounds on car parking income. If you look, and the figures are there for everyone to see, it's in black and white, almost £64,000 that we're down on car parking income already in the first three months of this financial year, three months, we are down £64,000. If you follow the current trajectory, and the pattern was emerging at the same time last year, we stood here at the same time last year and said, we are sixty odd thousand pounds down on the car parking meter income, I stood here and said that our natural trajectory will be losing a quarter of a million pounds, and standing here at the end of the financial year, what do the figures reveal? We're down a quarter of a million pounds. And I don't want to be stood here in the same position, saying yet again, we're down a quarter of a million pounds. When will the controlling group listen, Mr Mayor? They seem to pride themselves on being an open and transparent council, although I think one or two residents in the gallery have disputed transparency in this council, but if you are really in listening mode, you will look at the figures, you will take the advice of people who've come and offered it, and actually do something about it. The same old answers lead to the same old problems, and they aren't resolving them, Mr Mayor, so we won't vote for this report.
Thank you. Councillor Councillor Conde?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. There's lots of interesting stuff in this report, and I actually sort of disagree that the leadership doesn't listen, because actually we've been honoured for years and years that we needed a town centre manager back, and they finally put one back. It was a massive loss four years, and actually looking at the market store income, which is starting to, the fall's starting to slow down, actually maybe we did listen eventually, that we needed to get some money into the town centre, and actually maybe if we push that through, we can actually start thinking about regenerating the town, actually having sensible car parking charges, rather than this blanket rates that mean we've got empty car parks, and actually, we can actually try and be optimistic, yeah, we should actually look and stop this looking backwards and try and look forwards, we can actually make this town more successful. It took Hinkley a long while to do it, it set the business improvement district up, it had to work, it has to be constructive, but Hinkley has come a lot better and gone a long way, and I don't think it's been particularly party political over Hinkley Way, there are lots of different parties that run Hinkley Council, but there are people who actually talk to businesses and listen to them. On the other issues, waste is a really big cost in here, we talked about recycling credits in here, we should really be working together as accounting, and in fact Coventry, Warrington are wasted. We've wasted so much money, we've been long, we're driving past each other, and the issue is overshowing the cruise, Coventry's just going through the pain of training over to a system like we've changed over to about five or six years ago. Yeah, these are areas where we could actually be really saving money, if we actually worked with Coventry, Warrington, and actually having the same bin service, the same staff, actually working together as a collection service, so we actually get efficiency to the scale, maintenance, et cetera. There's a whole load of things we could do better, and rather than be negative, I might be positive for change, yeah, the town centre manager has actually been a good hire, we have started to tidy things up, do deep cleanings, and maybe we could actually start to move forward and actually make this town a great success like it was in 2008/9, when we won best street market venue award.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As a follow-on, some more information from councillor Condeco, Hinkley only have one Labour councillor, that might have something to do with it. I'm looking at this, and I can see town centre improvements and town centre regeneration schemes on two separate lines, one for £200,000, one for £450,000. Doesn't really explain what that's about or what the differentiation is between the two. I'm hoping that one of them will be used to listen to us again and put a nice Christmas tree in the town centres, because you listened to us last year and it was much appreciated by the residents. It was in the budget, if you want to check back, you can, it's admitted. The other thing was, I'm seeing the community connectivity project, so I'm guessing that you've still not pulled your support for it, even though you keep saying it's not your fault, it's somebody else's, but I'm yet to see anybody stand up from here and actually support the residents and say, stop the project. So I can't vote for it because the connectivity project is still in that place.
Councillor Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My hobby for us, or I'm rather perturbed about the car parking continual losses. What, if anything, as a forward plan for car parks from the leader over the road? I'm just terribly worried about the car parks, we're going to come into the season of goodwill, will we be offering free parking or cheap rate parking? So we shall be losing more and more money on the car parks. Why don't we take a leap out of Hinkley? Their parking is cheaper. I'm led to believe now we even want extra buses to go to Hinkley, as I take the advice from the member opposite.
Councillor Grant?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm also concerned about some more losses in this report with the higher income of the Civic Hall. It's quite worrying that we're losing over £8,000 on this, it should be very successful, it could be great, it really could be, and there's some great events going on at the Civic Hall, and with a bit more support, it could go from strength to strength, but how we're losing money, I just don't know. I mean, you just need to encourage people to use it more. Would the council be willing to suggest getting in touch with the town centre manager to look at some possible solutions on how to increase income here? I think it would be worth looking into and just trying to find some solutions to bring more people in.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson, did you want your
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm looking at table 6.1, which is actually not about [inaudible], it's about how income generated, generated are on track, and I know the Civic Hall, contrary to the plans made by councillor Treaney, is actually showing some very good trends in private show higher, perhaps not as encouraging for bar incomes, so it's not a picture that has been painted by a member of the board. I think also members of the opposite have only chosen to speak about what they perceive as very negative things on income generation and on the council budget. What they have specifically failed to talk about are the really exciting projects that are actually two parts of the recommendation to council today. One is about noting the general fund and HRA position, I'm possibly going to vote against noting it. Two, that you reckon there's some environment and the HRA capital budgets and general fund budgets that are really welcomed, really welcomed, I would have thought, that investment in Nuneaton, Bedworth and Warrington, perhaps say that because councillor Condeco constantly talks about Aitain and fails to remember that we have towns in both Nuneaton, Bedworth and Warrington. And certainly the third recommendation there, which talks about setting aside contract procedures so that we favour a local business, surely to goodness, every single member in this council would vote for that. So it seems you can't not vote to note a report, surely to goodness, you're not going to vote against mass capital investment in the general fund and HRA, and surely you're not going to vote against enabling local businesses. I'm sorry, the arguments put forward by members of the opposition don't add up, they are hot air, and they are not in the interests of residents in Nuneaton, Bedworth, Warrington, Wickford, I could go on and on. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Harvey?
Well, I'll keep it simple and just say Aitain and Bedworth, Mr Mayor, because that's what it's called, sorry councillor, but that's what it's called. Mr Mayor, I'm concerned about some of the dribble talk in this chamber, because in actual fact, the opposition would find a great deal of difficulty to find a council that provides the range of services that we do at the low prices that we do. Very, very difficult. They can talk all they like about Hinkley and Rugby, where councillor Condeco wants a county bin service, does he want Rubies, where they have to pay for the green bins since last year? Does he want south of the county, where some places, we're talking about, now I'm going to be empty for three weeks? Does he want that? We have the best bin service in Warwickshire. You cannot find a better authority, and we want to keep our bin service, Mr Mayor, we don't want people in Stratford-on-Avon deciding that we should have the same as they do, because everything south of this is not as good. North Warwickshire is the same, but they copied it from us. We lent them our office of a one day a week to do it, Mr Mayor. So, I'm sorry councillor Condeco's got his county councillor hat on, wanting everything to be run from Shire Hall, and I know they want to abolish Aitain and Bedworth and run everything from Shire Hall to the advantage of the south, I'm sorry it's them and us, but it is, Mr Mayor, because look at the investment in this borough from south of Coventry, and it's a minimal, look at all the weeds along Coaten Road, look at the bashed barriers in the centre of Bedworth, I've asked for the shop mobility sign to be put on the right car park for 10 years, and the county's still showing it going to the wrong place, because they don't care about Nuneaton and Bedworth, Mr Mayor. But the councillors opposite will pick this and pick that, and we can give cheap car parking to everybody, we can do this, well, okay, Mr Mayor, let's give free car parking, let's turn off the CCTV which it helps to pay for, and let's let the police do the policing job in this borough, because at the moment, we do the majority of the policing job, the CCTV room up there is manned, or woman, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year protecting our citizens. How many police officers do you see? The police take as much, just slightly shorter of the council tax as we do, but yes, Mr Mayor, on this side, we would like to make a big saving on the total council tax you pay, we'd like to abolish the Office of the Police Commissioner.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded, item number C, all those in favour. And against? And abstentions? Okay, that item's carried, and can I, that was our last item, but just before I close the meeting, I just want to say, and actually councillor Jackson kind of beat me to it, but I'll be repeated in my role, current role, as the mayor of Nuneaton and Bedworth. On a number of occasions, and I'm going to be fair to councillor Condeco, he's not been the only one tonight, that talks about the town singular, Nuneaton singular, we are a borough of Nuneaton and Bedworth, and you are elected to serve the whole of the borough. Thank you very much for your attendance. In closing the meeting, I would say we have got a 10 minute recess, so if people could